You're good to go in, Mike.
It's still technically good morning. Got to excuse me, I'm having lunch or just finishing my last bite. John, you're smiling like you've you've you're the cat who caught the canary.
I was about to say, don't make fun of me, I gotta put my glasses on to read something for a second.
I've been four eyes for forty years.
All right, so are you at the point now where you gotta take your glasses off to see things like either far away or up close?
I can read up close just fine.
Yeah, same.
But if you ask me to read a street sign that's two hundred yards away, good luck.
Yeah, I just started, I just literally started down that path. Especially at night.
Computer screens do it, and what gets me now is glare at night.
Yeah.
Headlight glare, that's Bob's going, yep.
That's it, the glare at night.
It just seems to me that some of the headlights, I always think they have high beams on.
Right, same.
But the new lights seem, you know, just putting out a lot more lumens, I guess, and it's tough to adjust.
And if they're not properly adjusted, Bob, it's just as bad as having high beams right at you.
Right at you, no, right. Is that Nina on Dover B O S? You need to even unmute Nina.
No, I'm not, I don't know who Dover B O S is.
That's me, Bob, Mona.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's always Mona, Dover B O S, that's hers.
Yeah, the boss, she needs another S.
I'll get on that, Bob, thank you.
We're missing Mrs. Hunter. What do we have, a couple of minutes?
One minute.
The way you said that, I feel like we're at a Bruins game.
Yeah, you're in the penalty box. Man, I got an awful lot of documents open here.
There's Robin.
Yeah, there's Robin, okay.
All right, this is when I disappear. Enjoy your meeting.
Thank you, Dave, be good. Okay, welcome to our B O S August ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Healy's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything on your broadcast may be captured by the recording. As a preliminary matter, I'm going to introduce myself and other members of the board. Hi, I'm Bob Springett, Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can be heard. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John Jeffries.
Here.
Robin Hunter.
Robin, you're muted.
Here.
Nina and anticipated speakers on the agenda could be our town administrator, Michael Blanchard.
Here.
Attorney Nina Pickering Cook.
Here, and with me also is our associate, Matt Bowser.
Okay, I remember Matt, we were kidding him the last time about this. Hi, Matt, how are you?
How's it going, gentlemen?
Okay, that being done. Let me move to. Okay, got that out of the way, we're gonna go here. So, the meeting has started, citizens' comments. Item. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Done, Bob.
Okay, item one by one, vote response to open meeting law complaint filed by Jonathan Frye dated August third, twenty twenty-three, on file with the town clerk regarding the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen meeting. Who's item is this? Mike, is this yours?
Sure, I can introduce it, then I think Nina or Matt could fill in. So, as the board received earlier, a public, excuse me, open meeting law complaint was filed by Jonathan Frye regarding your July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three executive session. The details are contained in the complaint. Town Council's present, they have drafted a proposed response to open meeting plate for your review and discussion today. Ultimately, we would need a vote to approve a response, and then that would be sent both to the complainant as well as the Division of Open Government and the Attorney General's Office.
Okay.
Bob, if you would like, I can jump in now briefly, what I would say is.
So Nina, it's really hard to hear you.
I'm sorry.
It might just be me, but.
Yeah, no, I'm not having a, I'm not having an issue, Robin.
Okay.
John, are you?
To hear Nina?
Yeah.
No, she was, I think when she moved a little closer, it became louder, but she just moved closer.
I will speak up, usually that's not a complaint.
Robin, is that okay? Can you hear?
I saw her nod her head, so just stop me, Robin, if you can't understand.
I'll agree.
There are just two allegations of this open meeting law complaint. The first is that the description, the notice of the meeting itself was inadequate, and the second allegation is that you all should have held the discussion you held in the executive session in open session, that there wasn't a proper purpose for you all to go into executive session. I have provided you with our draft response that is, again, this is, this is something for you to discuss the allegations and make your own findings, but to the extent you want guidance as to whether, based on prior decisions of the Division of Open Government, whether we believe this would be, either would be a violation of the open meeting law, our response sets forth that we don't think they are. With that, I guess I will turn it over to Bob. I am aware, I think, Mike, let me know that Mr. Fryer wanted to speak. I leave that up to Bob, perhaps that's the seven eight one number here.
So maybe before we do that, can you want to review the allegations and the discussion or not?
That is up to you, Bob, whether you want to hear from Mr. Fryer with respect to his complaint first, or whether you want to have the discussion first.
Well, I will listen to Mr. Fryer, but it has to be, the discussion needs to be limited to this filing of the open meeting law complaint. If it's not, I'm gonna ask him to stop. Mr. Fryer? Okay. Not exactly sure what's going on here, folks.
The seven eight one number is muted, so.
Okay, now it's not. Mr. Fryer, are you on the line? Okay, getting no response, let's move on, please.
Sure, so the first allegation that the description of the purpose for the executive session was inadequate. Again, this is an allegation about the meeting notice itself. Mr. Fryer has alleged that the the listing should have included the fact that he was requesting a waiver of the attorney-client privilege in the description for the meeting notice. What the meeting notice said was, I actually don't have it right in front of me right now, but it said essentially going into executive session for the purpose of discussing Mr. Fryer's litigation related to Mr. Fryer's public records request. As far as, so those are kind of the underlying facts for you to discuss. The law that's relevant with respect to that allegation is that the description of an executive session purpose needs to be specific enough such that a member of the public can read the topic and understand the anticipated nature of the public body's discussion. I would point out that the the nature of the discussion certainly does not mean the exact specifics of the discussion and that I am, I am comfortable based on, this is the guidance portion from County Council's office, based on other decisions rendered by the Division of Open Government, I'm comfortable that the description that the town listed in the agenda was sufficient.
Thank you, Nina. John, any points, anything you want to raise?
No.
No?
No.
Robin?
No.
Okay, let's go on.
Next allegation is that Mr. Fryer wanted the discussion regarding his request for waiver of the attorney-client privilege on a certain emails we held in a public meeting because he didn't feel that there was a valid litigation purpose. As you remember, there are only ten purposes for which your board can go into executive session. You cannot go into executive session purely just to receive privileged communications from your council. We did not do that here. The the purpose cited was the litigation exemption, which is purpose number three. Now, purpose number three is goes beyond just filed litigation. The board may go into executive session, I'm quoting an attorney general's opinion here, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation that is pending or clearly and imminently threatened or otherwise demonstrably likely. We, with the town administrator's office, determined that litigation was demonstrably likely given that Mr. Fryer had threatened to appeal the town's response to the public records request should the board not agree to waive the attorney-client privilege with respect to these specific emails. Again, I am comfortable that that's a decision and a discussion that was appropriate for executive session. I'm happy to answer any questions you all have about that, but you should discuss whether you believe or find that's a violation.
John?
I'm mindful of Nina's instructions with regards to her last sentence, determining whether that is something we consider to be to be pertinent. What what I'm very concerned about is we have, we do not have the underlying root of this, which are the emails in question.
Robin?
I, you know, my position here is it's a bigger issue than what the content of those emails are. It's whether or not a general client privileged emails are, should be made public. And so, you know, I I agree with the recommendation here.
Okay. So, then the proposed motion is I move to respond to the O M L complaint, but finding that there is no violation on either allegation or is otherwise decided by the board and to delegate to the town manager and town council's office responsibility for documenting this response to those required to be provided notice of our response.
Do you want a second?
It would be nice.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I, Bob Springett?
John Jeffries is not going to vote because I don't think we have enough evidence that we are actually voting on something that we are aware of, namely the emails. So I I don't think it's possible to vote on this without actually seeing the emails.
Okay, Robin?
I, Robin Hunter.
All right, motion passes two to one. So we're gonna move on.
Bob, before you move on, I'm just gonna jump off, I don't, unless you want Matt and I to stay, I don't think we need to stay on for the next agenda item.
Well, you want to, unless you want to opine on our priorities for FY twenty-four, I would.
Wait. Oh, okay, never mind, there was a chat, so I thought it was a question room.
No, I was specifically asking the person on seven eight one if they were a part of Jonathan Fryer's office, but they're not, so.
All right, we're gonna move on, right?
Addressed and taken care of, yes.
Hey, Carol, we'll be in touch.
Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, review of board committee commission feedback. Presenter, me? Mike, I never want to be the presenter.
Okay, duly noted.
Okay. So, on July twenty-sixth, a member was sent to the town boards and committees asking for feedback on the list of goals and priorities identified by the selectmen in July of twenty twenty-three. The board will discuss the responses received. I responded to Kate Peterson's comments by email, and they were related to mostly technology issues. And in that discussion, I had said that we can't do technology projects if we don't have a technology person with a suitable skill set.
Which was your opinion and not the opinion of the board per se?
Yes, it was, it was clearly my opinion and not necessarily, but if the board has some magic to turn people into technically sophisticated personnel, I'd be happy to discuss at any time. So we also had similar response from, my reading of it was from Carol Lisbon from the planning board. And then I don't know if there's a third. I think there was a third from Kathy Weld. Right?
Yes.
So, from from Carol, we have implementation of an online permitting process, strengthening digitization and content management, support into digitizing of paper records with appropriate systems, website enhancements, which we actually have as a plan that we will take on, installation of real hybrid meeting room system, improved mechanisms for community engagement. And so, most of those, the online permitting process is multi, goes across different departments, and I've been warned several times by other people that this is a more than a straightforward task, and we still don't have a municipal project manager or a business analyst. Strengthening digitization and content management across systems across the townhouse. We have, we have an object, part of our objectives of digital transformation, which I think Carol captures in her description, and digital trends, transformation includes online services and digitizing the flow of information and capturing the flow of information in a sophisticated document management system. Real, the installation of a real hybrid meeting room system is something that we've struggled with for about a year now, maybe a little bit longer. And the issue is, I understand it is, the sound systems between Dover TV and our Zoom apps in an acoustically challenged room is at the root of the problem, but we've never been able to solve it, so maybe we can. I don't, I don't think it'd be a high priority because I think we'd run along without it, but that's, that's sort of my response. Improved mechanisms for community engagement. I mean, I think that's all sort of wrapped up in our website redesign and in hiring people to who have the professional skills to set up a real process for engaging with residents. And so. And then we had Kathy Weld, who had some specifics. The goal to define role of warrant committee strikes me as being outside the purview of the B O S. We agree, we are working with the chairman of the warrant committee to look at how we can better improve the overall process of creating a budget, educating the public, and getting it done in a timely fashion. The Bible will change regarding employee reporting as described in rather failed terms, which make it difficult for citizens to recognize the real intent. The real intent is to have functions managed by the staff, the T A's staff that are critical to town execution, to be handled by professionals, not necessarily volunteers. And we think it's important to have those professionals to report to the town administrator. Again, not to, not to volunteer run independent boards, and that's been, that's been a goal for a couple of, a couple of years, and we've said it several times. Staffing, recruitment and onboarding, who's responsible is really, it's the T A's. It's up, it's, we don't set, we don't do the work, as I've said many, many times. What we said is direction and strategy and what we need to do going forward. We do it collaboratively with the town administrator or administrators, as the case may be, and we agree those priorities. Performance metrics are meant to make sure that we're getting value for our money. And again, that would be something that would sit with the town administrator, not with the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen respects the role of the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen understand their role as policy, and we try to adhere to those things. The world today is much more complicated than it was thirty years ago. The challenges for municipality operate, the ability to attract and retain people are also challenging. And we, the four of us, Mike, Robin, John and I prefer to work as a management team. We achieve the best results for the town. I think I covered that. John or Robin, any comments? Robin decided to leave, I must have been too windy.
I don't know where she went.
She's outside the door, she's taking another call. Any, any comments, John?
No, Bob, that covers everything, and the the only part that I would just go back to is, in the beginning, Bob, you you spoke about the openings, municipal project manager, assistant town administrator. There was a, there was one, there was a third opening that I thought we discussed, but I think that there's, I thought we had three, and I just.
Yeah, but A T M, M P A. We have, we help the regional house nurse, the police chief.
Police chief, we're gonna talk about in my.
Yeah. So that's A T A, F P A, business analyst.
Business analyst, business analyst. I, I, I don't know if we, you covered that or not, but I just wanted to add that in because the, the, the three openings, the project manager, the business analyst and the assistant town administrator, create a vacuum. And a lot of the things that we have been struggling with over the past couple of years and and things that both Carol, Kathy, Ann Kay, all point out are items that would be addressed by municipal project manager, business analyst and assistant town administrator. The, the implementation of a lot of the technology items that they, they all point out need to be done immediately would fall to a large extent on Michael and these three people. So, we literally just got Mike in, he came back for his third week, which congratulations, Michael, you've been here for three weeks. I'm so proud of you, come back for the fourth week. Quite literally, those three open areas and Mike, who's been here for three weeks, are going to shoulder a lot of that burden. I just wanted to make that statement clear to everyone so they knew the context of what we're actually working with.
You cannot do the work without the people with the skill sets, that, it's as simple as that. And the B, the B A position was the D N, Diana Pizak position, when she was the help desk person going back. My, 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 my goal, my goal, the, the, I actually think we'll need, given the work going on, given if we hire the M P M and the anticipated workload, we'll need probably two business analysts that can work between the communications work and the technology work to, to, to really start to recapture a year plus lost. So, that is that. Robin, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I do. I would, having never been a T A or having never run a town, you know, personally, I think we should ask Mike to define, you know, and certainly he's only been here three weeks, what are the gating items that need to be filled immediately? Like the skill sets that he needs, it's very, very difficult to find people. I will tell you for software implementation projects, which is what this on online.
Online services, yes.
Service system is, you, we could hire a, a firm that specializes in the implementation of software to help us lay the groundwork so that when somebody does come in, you know, we can jump on the process. The first thing you have to do is be able to define the processes that you have today, where your gaps are, and then look at potential. These are packages, it's not software that you have to develop itself and see which one best fits us, and then begin to talk to the various vendors that sell these systems. Also go to towns that have them implement it. I mean, I think we could go to Easton, so I don't think we, I, I, I personally believe that we need to prioritize the hiring so that we make sure that we hire the right people. I will tell you from personal experience to go out there and hire, just to get warm bodies doesn't help at all. It just creates problems, but by the same token, there's no reason not to begin to do the groundwork, and this.
You don't have the people.
Well, you, again, you could hire a firm to begin to document the process. If you don't understand, because you have to do this in any event. And it shouldn't just be the Board of Selectmen's office. You know, this is, what does, the Board of Health needs to be part of it because there, the permitting goes through them. The, the inspector's office needs to be part of it. The planning board needs to be part of it, so we need to map out exactly what we're looking for, and.
What, which is what makes this particular application tough. And what, which is what makes this particular application tough.
Their consultants out there that this is what they specialize in.
Good, I mean, I don't know why we haven't hired a firm a year ago. But we haven't.
But I, I, you know what, pointing fingers doesn't help, so the question is, I am just saying, if we want to start. We can start.
Yes, all of that is, that's all true, where I, I don't think either of you is saying anything that's novel. We've known these things for a long time, it's a matter of we have to do it. We have a, we have a health agent at the board of health who is actually implemented. A software program that we're talking about for licensing and for permitting.
You have a TA that's done it too, so you know, there's lots of people.
Let me finish, Robin, we've, we have people who have done it, we have to make it a priority to do it and we have to. Give them the means to actually do it, but by which money, it's gonna require money to do this and, and so. Uh, we might not have had these people two years ago, we definitely didn't have Michael two years ago. Um, I don't, I don't recall exactly when our, our health agent started, whether it was the middle of last year or the end of last year. But we do have these people and I have had lengthy conversations with our permitting. And our licensing people as it pertains to inspections and homes and. And all of that process that is incredibly frustrating to everyone that's a part of it. Because of how antiquated and and aged our systems are and our processes are, so. Eh, everybody's on the same page, we just have to make it a priority, now that we have a town administrator who can oversee the process, make it happen.
The uh, the end of this, this issue for me. Is not the application that we choose to use, but how well we train and develop the staff. Where in every, I, I've, I've implemented tons of systems. And the weak point in most of the implementations is not the technology, it's training the staff. And making sure that staff understand the implications and how things work. And the more complicated the system that you're implementing, the more challenging the training is, and so when you come down to this. You really have to, again, it's, project management is project management one oh one, you need to have the tech who can do it. You need to have the support staff who can do it and you need to make sure that everybody involved in the process is trained. So it's, it's, it's not just Mike, that's not what we hired Mike to do, um, and we.
The focus of today's meeting is not how to do it, it's what the priorities are, so clearly putting together a plan. For, for um, an online. Permitting system is, is a priority, so is that the number one priority? Because if that's the number one priority, then let's, let's mark it as that and we can put together a plan. Of how it's gonna be implemented with goals and objectives for what we're, we, 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 we want to achieve. Over the next twelve months.
I, I do not want to make it a high priority unless we have the resources to do it.
Great, so that's part of the plan, you know, an implementation plan is from soup to nuts. It's putting the plan together, it's identifying the process to, to ensure that you get. Software that or hardware or whatever you need, that's gonna achieve those goals. And then it's also user training in the end and overall, and, and then it's adoption rate, which also um. Gauges success, right? You know, and, and we know from, I think, I think Mike may have mentioned this and um. The town planner candidate, a new town planner also mentioned it. That it takes time to get a hundred percent adoption, because people are distrustful of it.
Yep.
So, you know, I think everybody agrees it's a priority, so let's, let's make it a priority on this list.
So I have digital transformation as a medium. On the um, goals and priorities.
So that seems like a very large umbrella, so does. Does this?
It's a P, right, what you're talking about is a piece of digital transformation.
Right. So this fits under the umbrella, so maybe a priority is online permitting system and next priority is. Data storage, digital data storage.
And that's a big deal, I, I think next priority would be getting people's email addresses. So we could actually communicate by digital means rather than paper based means. And that is, we've talked about that, that is a P, so digital transformation and specifically permitting system would be a P. Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, anything else? That you saw? In the comments?
No, there's, just, there's a lot of similarity, there's.
A lot of, yeah, people are, um, pretty much the same stuff, which is, it's nice, it's nice to have.
Which helps define priority.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think people's priorities um are. Experienced through frustrations that they may have had in this past, these past couple of years with these various systems. So it's been, I know it's, it is a source of frustration for many of them.
Jerry, John, Jerry, when, when I first, when I was left in twenty eighteen, this was his beef and I talked about it. And I, at that time, I was talking to Carl Valente and Carl talked about it being, you know, particularly sticky thing to do. And we had nobody, we had Diane, you know, so yeah, I share the frustration with our colleagues. And um, if we can move forward, I'm all for it.
Actually, the assist, the part-time building inspector has also has experience doing that.
Yes, he has. And, and, and not only has experience, has led the implementation for other towns, most recently, um, Milford.
So it just like with the website redesign, when we talked about that, I thought we had the people to do it. Um, and with this, if we have the people to do it, let's go for it. But we didn't need to make sure we have the people to do it soup to nuts, including the cross-training that's involved. Um, and I, I don't think anybody, I can't imagine why you would have an objection to that. Good?
Good.
But I still come back to with Robin and John, we gotta get moving on staffing. Um, and that means yesterday.
Well, I think Mike's, right, we, we have been interviewing candidates.
Yep, we, we are moving, we're screening uh the ATA candidates, um, and we'll continue to move on it as, as quickly as we can.
And for the MPM, are we gonna use an outside consultant?
I think that's something to look at is we try to kind of develop the implementation plan, um, I think that's a way we could kick it off relatively quickly. Um, so I, I'd be, I'd be very much in favor of looking into that right away.
Mike, in your opinion, from what you've seen of the candidates so far, are you, how, how do you feel? Just.
Uh, I feel comfortable, we have a small number of very qualified candidates, um, so we're.
All you need.
So we are hope, it's not, you know, wasn't as big as a pool as I had hoped, but I think that's, you find that in every industry right now, so, uh. But there are, there are a small number of very qualified candidates that, that we're screening and hope to bring forward to a, um. A panel interview.
Okay.
I would like to see the job description.
I can send that out.
That'd be nice, yeah, send it to the board, please. All right, well, that sounds good and um. I'm assuming now that what we have identified is as Ps. With the adjustment for the digital transformation permitting is what we're gonna go with. And we feel comfortable that we can accomplish.
Yes.
I wanna, you know. I mean, there's two aspects to this, where you can fill up the plate and not get anything done. I want to get the right size plate and with the right size staff so that we can, we can move together, um, uh, move forward together. Uh, collaboratively, okay.
Well, I think the key is. Reporting so that if we do run into unforeseen hiccups that we all know. What caused them and why things are taking longer.
Yeah, 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 that would, with that, I'm assuming that would just simply be either. Up as a, as a project plan independent, but it would just be part of the town administrator's biweekly update.
Right, because, you know, you never know, you never know what comes up that you never expected.
No one expects the Spanish Inquisition, we all know that. All right, thank you very much, folks, we're on our way.
Right. So tomorrow it will be implemented, Mike?
That's right, it's all done.
Right, we'll be over to test it.
You're looking at next year, I bet, you're not looking at this year.
We're looking at tomorrow.
Yeah, we're not, we're talking about FY twenty four here, but maybe January.
Right, no, even that's too soon.
I know.
Do you want a motion, Bob?
I will make a motion, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four list of goals and priorities. As amended at today's meeting.
Seconded.
I Bob Spring.
I John Jeffries.
I, Robin Hunter.
Is that it, we done?
We done.
Yeah, I um, I can just report briefly that. The police chief search screening committee received thirty applicants. And we have reviewed all thirty applicants, we're gonna meet this evening. And um, we encourage people to tune in, log in, um, it's gonna be a lively discussion. Um, it's, uh, we've got very, very well qualified applicants. From very well-known towns around us, so. Very pleased about this so far.
Well, we'll see how it goes, John, we wish you the fair winds and following seas.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, so I, before we thank everyone, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi Bob Spring.
I John Jeffries.
I, Robin Hunter.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So when's Mike, when's our next meeting, twenty fifth?
Twenty third, I saw it, Eric.
Which is next, the week after next.
Okay, folks, have a great day.
It's a beautiful day.
And um, thank you all for your participation. Have a good one.